Got to start the foundation right.
Yeah.
Damn. Ain't gonna happen, is it? I expect two or 40 minutes of the location. Because the plan I've had for three years.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Lakeland Shore City Council Meeting, December 6th, 2018 at 6:30 to order. Kim, do you mind taking roll call, please?
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Kopeski.
Present.
Mayor Zeller.
Here. If you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have sheriff's deputies here this evening. Gentlemen, would you like to say anything to us this evening? We know your time is better served, so we'd like to meet you in and out as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I was just looking for someplace warm.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Um, I don't have much to pass for Lakeland Shores. One thing I wanted to talk about was earlier this week, there were a string of vehicle break-ins and, I believe, two thefts of an actual vehicle in Lakeland, like the northeast corner, so just north of you guys. We have a pretty good picture.
South side of I-94?
South side of, like, the 65400 block of Quinmore, Quinell, that area.
Yep.
Kiody. We have a pretty good picture of the suspect, it sounds like he's from over in the cities. But just something to be aware of, make sure you're locking your doors and keeping valuable stuff out of your cars. Sometimes just a locked door is enough to deter a criminal, like they just check it and move on. Also something to be aware of, we've had a couple incidents of people following like UPS and USPS trucks around until they drop off a package and then they'll run up and steal it. So with that, there's quite a few options you can do, you know, if you're having something shipped that's pretty valuable. Either try to have it shipped to like a neighbor, or you can leave special instructions, you know, around back or out of sight, in a bush, or whatever, but there's a few different options. Something else to be aware of this time of year.
Okay, good, good information.
Yes.
I might be one of those people, I think, well, I know somebody stole a saw out of the back of my truck, so get ahold of the guy, see if he's got a skill saw.
Yeah. Whenever you're free, you know, after the meeting or whatever, give us a call or tomorrow.
Yeah, well, sometime this weekend.
Yeah, we'll take a report and that way we can document, you know, if you have a serial number or whatever, if we find this guy and stolen vehicle, we can get it back to you.
Great, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sergeant Van Cley, I'm your contract sergeant, and so just checking in with you guys. I know he's doing a good job, so I don't need to ask that, but if there's anything that I can address?
You know, one item that was discussed amongst the five cities, and that's the bike trail. There was some discussion about whether or not the communities wanted to snowplow the trail, and four out of the five have decided, we don't want to do that, but the concern that really started the discussion was the snowmobiles and the damage that they're doing to the trail. And it's not all snowmobiles, but it's the studded snowmobiles that aren't allowed on there.
Correct.
Is there, I know that you only have two snowmobiles in the county for actual patrol, but since that path runs around County 18, is that something that you guys might be able to keep an eye out for?
Definitely, I mean, even the area squads can check, I mean, if they think, if they see somebody on there, we can attempt to stop them. Sometimes they will detour if they see a squad or they know that they're in violation. But I can definitely bring this up with the Water Parks and Trails Sergeant, which is Sergeant Kyle Skank.
Okay.
And we had a similar issue like this in Hugo approximately five, six years ago. They resurfaced that trail up there and there was a lot of damage and stuff, and so it's not a, an issue that we haven't dealt with before, so I'll definitely bring it up with them and they can do extra patrols. They'll have, you know, snowmobiles down here, especially with first snow. We try to have people out because obviously for snow, there's not that much snow, people are going to get their sleds out and that's the time to educate them, and if there is damage, they're held liable for that, so.
I think it's a small percentage, but unfortunately, that reflects on everyone and it is causing some damage to the, to our brand-new path, so, yeah, anything that you could do to keep an eye out for that would be very much appreciated.
And sometimes people just need to be educated, they're not even aware that they can't be on this trail with a studded track.
Right.
And so we take that into consideration also.
Right, excellent.
All right.
Yeah, no, we're very happy, pleased with the service.
Be glad to answer any questions, anytime you can always reach out and you can go through the guys and, or you can call me directly too.
Would you maybe just make sure that Kim has your contact info?
I will.
In the event that that happens? Great, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Merry Christmas.
So our next item of business is the consent agenda. There's two items on there, approve November 1st, 2018, city council meeting minutes, and approve the monthly claims.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we did not get a motion for the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there, I'll make the motion that we adopt our agenda. Is there a second?
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item then is the consent agenda with the two items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Only commotion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
John, any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Did you have something, Kim? Oh, okay. Public comment, Tom, this is your section here. Not to put you on the spot, but if you wouldn't mind coming up here. So public comment, if there's anybody that has anything that they'd like to bring to the attention of the council that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do that. Mr. Scanlon is a neighbor down the road, had contacted me with a concern, and I encouraged him to come to the meeting tonight and talk to the council.
Yeah, well, thanks for the opportunity. Recently did a remodeling project and after the tail end of the project, received a bill from the city for roughly $5,400. And to me, it was for reviewing of plans that I had done by an engineering firm, and to me, that felt like an excessive amount.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if you're budgeting for a remodeling project, I didn't put in my budget $5,400 for a bill from the city, so I wanted at least bring it to your attention and open the discussion for it, because to me, I would have never have guessed that my builder was floored at the amount of the bill, and so was I.
So, thank you for coming.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just give the council a little bit of a backstory. You had reached out to me via email maybe two, three months ago.
Yep.
And I had forwarded that on to, I believe I copied the clerk and I sent it to our engineer.
Yep.
Kim, do you happen to recall that response that we received from John? And I'm not making excuses, I just, again, wanted you to come in front of the council and express the concern. I think John was pretty specific about the hours that were billed and, and for the council's benefit, why don't I print that and get it to us for next month, but I just thought it was important that we have an applicant or a constituent come forward and say, you know, it's fairly expensive to go through the permitting process and to make sure we're aware of it and, you know, if there's any relief that we might be willing to offer, I think that has to happen at the council level, but.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, from if I recall in my memory, there were several reviews of the project. It wasn't just day one review and John was done reviewing, there were several, I think, reviews that had to be done.
Was the $5,400 predominantly from SEH?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, there were no city costs involved in that.
So I do have the email here, if you'd like, for the benefit of everyone, I could read that email, Mr. Perotti's response. Probably won't be able to act on this tonight, but I'm happy to then supply all the information to the council and we can discuss it at our next meeting.
For sure.
So, just for everyone's benefit though, I'll read this right now. Attached is the detail of what was charged on this project. All fees have been paid to SEH by the city. I understand why Mr. Scanlon might feel like the review fees are high, and if I didn't budget for them, I'm sure he was disappointed to receive this bill. Sometimes the projects in the shoreline area take more effort to review and get through the approval process. The applicant may need more handholding due to the complexities of the regulations. I would note that in the past couple of years, we have been providing more zoning review assistance than in the past, which likely contributed to the cost of this review being higher than others. In other communities, like St. Mary's Point, the council has reduced the bill to the property owner. Justification of reducing the bill has been that the smaller city doesn't have the staff to handle some of the routine tasks and sometimes additional expense or expertise is required to get the project like this through the approval process. The mayor in that community has said it's sometimes the cost to the city of doing business. And then he just volunteers that if there's anything more he can do to help in the discussion, to let them know. And then he did provide the detail. So, I'm, Kim, you have this? Would you mind printing it for our next meeting and putting it in the packet? Let's see if there's any council comments or questions?
Mm-hmm.
And then, then we'll bring it back next month.
Yeah, and could I just add to that too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I guess from my perspective, the engineering work cost, you know, for a lot of this work was about $7,500 for reference. So I'm paying an expert to do it, $7,500, and then to review it, it costs an additional five, plus about $7,000 in permitting fees. So to me, that's, in the grand scheme of things, that's, that's a lot of money towards a project, that's, especially $5,400 to me, that I had no idea would be out there.
Right. And, I mean, not to put John on the spot, but John did a riprap project, and I think just your permit and engineering and review for that project was $7,000, did you say?
No, but it was, the engineer was around four, permits were about a thousand, and which had to do with the grading permit was most of it. And, and then, I can't remember.
Survey cost or?
Well, I can't remember what, what the Perotti charged, charged, I can't, all I know is it was at least $5,000 to get off the ground, okay? And all I was doing was placing rocks on my bank, so.
Riprap.
Riprap, so, you know, I understand why I had to hire an engineer, I guess, but, you know, it's all kind of money you don't expect, I mean, some people would say, well, that's the cost of living on the river, you know, which I've been told several times. But on the other hand, some of us don't exactly need to have the additional expenses, so, you know, I feel your pain.
And I take you, I appreciate you guys taking that into consideration as well.
I can't quite believe that Perotti, John would, I mean, that's, you were talking about, what's he get, $165 an hour, is that what it is?
Something like that, yeah.
Something, and.
But keep in mind, I don't know if you remember his application.
Right.
We did, there was a variance that we went through and, so, I mean, there was.
Right.
Did that include the review of your path as well?
I believe it did.
Okay, so there was a, there was a path. I'll provide the detail.
We're still talking about over 100 hours, right?
Yeah, I'll, well, no, that'd be $10,000. It was a $5,500 bill.
About $30, $30-ish.
Yeah.
Mayor, concurrent with your thoughts earlier relative to we can't take any action on it tonight, it's good information, I'd make a recommendation that what you're saying, get us more information, have this gentleman come back, I'd like, I personally don't remember the variance and all that kind of stuff, like maybe John does and this and that, maybe we need a little more background and see what we can do for next, next year.
Yeah, I think the concept is whether it happens on this application or on others, is there a certain level of service that a resident can expect before they start to receive a chargeback? I really think at the end of the day, that's the only remedy that we might be willing to consider. Otherwise, to try to pick, you know, winners and losers is, is too tough for us to do, but there's no doubt you're paying your fair share of real estate taxes down there.
And I understand the circumstances, that the city doesn't have the funds to pay for somebody on staff all the time, so when you hire a consultant, it's obviously at a higher rate, but from a consumer standpoint, to bear the brunt of that, it's.
Right.
It's burdensome.
Yep, no, we understand. I keep beating this drum, our budget is $152,000 a year, so, you know, literally every time we have a $500 expenditure, I'm doing the math in my head of what percentage of our budget that is. It's, it's pretty lean.
Yeah.
You know, that's the good news, but I appreciate your comments and I'll make sure that we get the detail out to the council. I don't know if that'll be January or February, depends on what our agenda looks like, if we have a meeting in January.
Okay.
But at our next meeting, it'll be on there.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Can I just get your address for the record?
Sure, 125 Lakeland Shores Road.
I do have one question, so that was your project you did this year, correct?
Yes.
So you got your building permit?
Yes.
And that wasn't, that was a, how much was your building permit, do you know?
I had two of them and it was about $7,000 for those.
Okay, and then you had this one on top of that?
On top of it, yeah.
And then, so the engineering they did was for the riprap that you did, or a path and, or to?
For the engineering, yeah, it was a, you know, multiple facets of the project.
Okay.
You know, that, that bill independently was about seven grand.
But you didn't get that until just recently, or do you got it during the project?
Part of the project, yep.
Okay, okay.
So I knew about that.
Oh, okay.
But then it's to get the one from the city, I was like, whoa, reviewing.
Oh, so you didn't get that one until when? Till they closed out the project?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
And I literally had no money in the budget for it.
And so then, yeah.
At that point, you're going, oh, hello.
Going to be a skinny Christmas.
Hey, it's all right. Kids are older, they'll be fine.
Yeah. So really, the kids should be here complaining.
That's right.
Or maybe they'll be here in January. Perfect.
Okay, all right, anything else?
No, that's all we have, again, I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, thanks for the time.
Come on down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kim, any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item for a consideration of resolution 2018-10, 2019, final budget and levy certification. So I wanted to provide you a last-minute email. I swear I just received this, otherwise I would have printed a copy for you. It is from our treasurer, and it was just a couple of notes on the budget that I'd like to share with you. The proposed final budget included in the council packet is $155,120, a budget increase of 1.5% and does not include liquor license revenue of $1,540, which we've received in the past. Therefore, the property tax levy is $151,640, an increase of 2.1%. Regarding the 2019 proposed property tax forms sent out to residents recently, the city portion does show a property tax increase, but as you know, it's mostly due to the residents with a market value increase. For example, home with a market value of $300,000 saw an increase in taxable market value of 13%. Estimated 2018 actual budgets showing a $5,000 increase in revenue. So is that to say we're under budget 5,000, is what it's looking like?
I, I did not speak with Judy about this.
Okay. She'll have finalized numbers the end of December. That's it. So I believe we're going to finish under budget again. Last year, we were pretty significantly under budget, but this year, it looks like we're going to be about 5,000 under budget. So that's something for you to consider. Yep, electioneers are definitely more expensive. So, we have a proposed resolution. What are council thoughts?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number 2018-10, resolution adopting final city budget for 2019. I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll comment that I hate it. I hate anytime we have to increase the budget, but we've gone through this, our budget is not very big, we've gone through it line by line. I'm glad that we're outperforming our budget and we're coming in, you know, with a favorable balance, but frankly, we've been using that money to try to bolster our streets fund that, you know, we feel we're on a very, very thin line with that, so it is what it is, it's just the reality of, you know, being a very small city, I don't think we can do any better than this.
No, and I think you also have to take into account inflation and, I mean, things do go up, and it doesn't make a difference whether it's salt and sand that they're putting on your roads or, or the request.
Cleaning those gardens up? Well, we had two elections, you know, that adds.
Yeah, absolutely.
It does cost a lot for our little town to have an election.
And it's very important to understand, our, our property taxing, my, I don't know if I get any more value out of my home of living there, but certainly the taxes went up, and if that's part of it, you can't, you know, what are you going to do, go tell the county, no, I'm not going to pay my taxes now?
And we did, I think it's worth noting, from 2017 to 2018, the 2017 budget was almost $160,000. We decreased it to 153 last year, so we're still, you know, we're still better than we were in 17, we're a little bit higher than we were in 16, so. So that's with the money that we say, didn't use last year, but you're saying that's what it? No, we didn't, that, that money just was transferred. Yeah. In the general fund to the long-term street improvement. How much was it last year? It was about $17,000. Yeah, so that, you know, which is good, you know, compared to, so then we were, you know, we might be that.
And like, like you made in your comment earlier, Brian, with a small budget and it's not a lot of money, but the liquor license is a, you know, not having that, that's a significant percentage.
1% right there. Well, we have a lot of money sitting there at the property tax, because they haven't paid in a few years, there's probably.
Yeah, but we're not getting the $1,000 for the liquor.
Doesn't impact the budget, though. No. Whereas a liquor license does impact it. Yeah, that's true. So. Any other comments? Would you like to do this by roll call?
If you would like.
I would. Budget resolution.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Councilmember Kopeski.
Aye.
Mayor Zeller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone, for your hard work on that.
Our next item here is consideration of contract extension, addendum min spec. We have min spec, I'm just going to call you min spec. We've got Scott here for min spec. Would you like to say anything to the council?
Sure. I've, I'm a kind of a no news is good news kind of guy, and I haven't been here because Brian and I and the office interface whatnot, no one said come, so I haven't come, and I hope that's not a problem or offensive to you in any way, if it is, I certainly need to hear about it so I can be more attentive to your needs. 2018 has been a very interesting year for us with regards to a number of changes that are in process. You may have heard rumors about a new software program, maybe as early as 2016, that we were attempting to implement, and it's taken two years to get it done, but we were about to roll it out to all of our cities. It's called, company is Cityforce Wentworth Technologies, and we will, it's a cloud-based program that will allow us to do inspections on a tablet instead of on paper. The results will be instantly communicated off to the contractor, the designer, the homeowner, anybody who wants to be on that email list will get the results of that inspection. We're working on checklists for additional uniformity so that our inspectors are doing the same things in every city and in every instance where they're doing the same work. We've transitioned to electronic plan review, so all plans that are received by an applicant are either scanned or come electronic to us, and those plan reviews then take place on TV screens with HD monitors and souped-up computers and all that stuff, so that we can do all that as quickly as possible and then communicate that back to the consumer or the, the builder who's doing that work, they can print them out, we can facilitate that transit of information back and forth much faster than we can when we're working with paper. So those are the kinds of things that we've done to change in technology, and we are working towards adding two more people to our staff as well, so we'll be up to 22 people and working hard to try and decrease our plan review times. We've been at 10 days on the outside, we are averaging about five to six days now, and we're hoping to get to our outside edge of five days or faster on our plan review time.
Scott, would you mind taking us through the economics of our agreement? Because we've, there's been some confusion in the past in terms of permit fees, review fees, if that's, when that's paid out, what percentage is paid out, that type of thing?
Sure. I was actually terrified when the last, Mr. Scanlon was here talking about his project, thinking that that was our fee and not somebody else's fee, so I'm pleased that that wasn't my thing. The, the city adopts a fee schedule, and you have one, and then the valuation that's submitted is kind of cross-checked by us, and if it seems reasonable, we use it. And the combination of the valuation of the work and the fee schedule results in a permit fee. The permit fee is, there's a fee share arrangement for that, I don't remember exactly what the numbers are, if I could look at the contract, I could get it for you in just a.
So you follow our fee schedule?
Yep.
And then?
Sorry, so 85% of the permit fee and the plan review fee, so.
I can, I can understand what that is enough to explain it clearly.
Okay.
So if, in the, if you have a $5,000 permit, 85% of that comes to us and 15% stays with the city to deal with the expenses that you have with that. And then 65% of that permit fee is a plan review fee. So in that case, it would be, oh, gosh, I picked a bad number to do math in my head here, $3,000 plan review, let's just say it's close to that. And that is also split 85-15. So the city does retain some of that money, and again, there are costs associated with issuing a permit, we understand that, and there ought to be some money that goes towards the city for that. And speaking to the budget, if, you know, you get two large houses that get built on the river and they're $2 million apiece, there's going to be some additional upside on the budget from that revenue that's retained by the city. So valuation and the fee schedule result in a fee, and then we do a fee share, and part is retained by the city and the rest of it is sent to us at the end of the month.
Okay.
So that's, that's the short version.
Okay, and the contract amendment that you're proposing, what's the timeline extension here, that this would run till '21?
Three years, right.
So three year? Okay.
So, yeah, end of '19, end of '20, end of '21, right, three years.
Okay. Questions or comments for Scott while we have him here? Because we're going to bring you back up, because I'm seeing that there's an optional contract as well, and I think maybe Tim, do you know something about that?
No.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Okay. So any questions or comments for Scott right now?
I do.
Okay.
Brian, on number, on the amendment, and Scott, number two, appendix eight agreement, blah, blah, permitting software, you mentioned this software costs $50 for a month for each user ID. Do we, do we have a user in our system?
Uh, you, it, well, we're, we have rolled it out. Uh, you, it, well, we have rolled it out and we haven't started charging anybody yet, so this is a future charge. And if you have someone who wants access to the software, that would require a user. If you don't need to be able to input and do data entry and run reports and do all that other stuff, there's a read-only option that's included, so there wouldn't be a fee for that at all.
Hmm. Any, like John Perotti, the engineer, need to have access to that?
I don't think so. I'm not promising, but I don't think so. I mean, I would certainly expect one user is all you'd ever need, if there was to be one required.
Okay. Don't have one now, and whatever. Okay, that's it.
All right. Any other comments or thoughts for Scott? So, let's not take action on this, because really, if there's an optional contract, we should talk about that at the same time, and then we can decide what, if anything, we want to do. So, Tim, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Oh, yeah, so we did get an optional contract from Dwayne Stenzlin, and you can see that in front of us. You guys also had time to.
So, did he do that because he knew that our contract was up?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm vaguely familiar with Dwayne. He does, uh.
St. Mary's Point, Lake St. Cray Beach, and Afton.
Okay. I think he does West Lakeland, maybe, is the one.
Yes, West Lakeland, too.
And he built my house.
Oh, okay. So, with that, have you had a chance to, I honestly did not review what he put in the folder. I did just provide my copy to Scott so that he's aware. Do you have any thoughts or comments on how his, what he's proposing compares?
Uh, yeah, if you guys look at it. Let me grab this one here.
We can take a minute if you guys want to look at it. Well, one thing I see is maintaining office hours at public workshops, and that, we wouldn't want that to happen. No, I do know that through talking, when he talked, contacted me, he has an office here in this city hall, and that we would be available to use this as coming in and permitting them.
Okay.
And I'm not easily offended, and I'm not sure if I say I'm offended, but certainly could have taken more time, and instead, where it says on the very top, Stenzlin, the city of Lakeland Shores, here and referred after as Lakeland. No, why didn't he just put Lakeland Shores in all this? So, that, that's laziness there. We're Lakeland Shores.
So, I'll be the first to admit that I didn't spend enough time with this. And I've got a whole host of excuses, none of which I'm going to bore anyone with. And we discussed this last month. Our contract expires in December, but it goes month to month?
It really, there is no kind of carry-on provision. It ends on the 31st of December.
Okay. Well, what's the council's thoughts? I mean, I feel like I can't make an educated decision until I do a little bit more, put a little more energy into it. What are other people's thoughts?
Well, I think there's been some concern on the part of certain people that the response time by Minspect is, it takes too long, and I think that's been some of the, the problem that probably for smaller jobs, that, that people want a quicker turnaround time, and I think that may be the biggest issue for those people that need to get permits on a fairly regular basis. So, I'm not sure how to handle that. You know, I understand that you're hoping to speed things up at least, you know, rather than 10 days being the outside, and I'm assuming that's like what you just did for the houses on, let's say, Lakeland Shores Road, where you're dealing with a million dollars, that type of stuff.
Right.
But, there is some, there has been some concern out there with, you know, the smaller jobs where people actually get a permit and getting it a little bit faster, and so, is there any way that we could be assured that, I mean, what's it take? If somebody's putting a deck on, I realize that it depends on different times of year, you're busier than others.
Sure. That's supposed to be my problem, not, not the applicant's problem. I freely admit that. It's a, the, I'm, I understand the concern and I am willing to address it, so don't, this meander is not to get me out of that. Minnetoka was just in the news, I don't know, a month ago, and they were talking about the fact that they were three weeks out on inspections and, I don't know, eight weeks out on plan reviews or something like that. So, the next-day inspections are what you always get here currently. Our contract says that, and we should talk about residential because I don't think commercial's a real issue, residential, 10 days is our outer window for completing inspections, and I'm willing to alter the agreement such that we would change the 10-day window or 10-day limit to five days on residential projects, if that would help to alleviate your concerns about our ability to get plans turned around fast enough for people to start their projects.
And you're providing service to Bayport, Lakeland Shores, Lakeland, anyone else down here?
Not this way. I mean, we revamped a township and, you know.
Right.
Out that way. More Eastside. In St. Paul and other places, but not down here.
Okay. And in Bayport, are you, do you have office hours?
We don't. I mean, we tried office hours in Lakeland, gosh, for a year, a year and a half, and I think I saw two people over the course of that year and a half, two hours a week.
Just a waste of time.
Over that time, and we just decided that we could handle that through phone, or if someone needs to have a meeting, we're happy to come and meet with them at either here or.
Yeah, just need to schedule it.
Wherever we can get that done, we just have to schedule it. There's no problem with that at all. So, happy to be responsive to that, absolutely.
Okay. Again, my, just my quick review, there's.
I do have one thing to say with working with Stenzlin and Afton and then St. Cray Beach recently pulling building permits. I was able to get a building permit within 24 hours, you know, and that's nice and convenient. And also inspections, to call him on his cell phone and, you know, I, one day, I called at four o'clock and I had inspection set for 9:30, so that's convenient. And that's easy to work around where, I know a couple of years ago, it took me 10 days to get a fireplace permit from you guys.
Was it a masonry fireplace?
No. It was just in a living room where we had, I had to draw a framing and a drawing.
You were doing construction, though. It wasn't just a gas insert or something.
It was a gas insert.
But with, with construction?
Yeah, with eight feet of wall, nine feet high.
Sure.
And it took 10 working days for me to get a permit. And that, that's a little bit of a concern when you're trying to book and schedule projects.
Sure.
You know, to where having a guy locally down here is a lot more convenient. And nothing against you guys, you know, how they, you guys dot the i's and cross the t's and that, but it's just, the logistics is a big part of it. And I know a couple of times on inspections, I'm, I know the one on where I had to get a building permit for a soffit in a kitchen, I think I had an inspection for 2:30 and he was an hour late. He called to let me know, but then I stand there for an hour of downtime waiting for a final inspection, to where recently with Stenzlin, I, he's usually five, 10 minutes early, you know, or calls me and said, I'm early, I'll be there, so.
I think when we've had newer, or new home construction or sizable projects, that you guys have done a very, very good job of that. You know, those are bigger, more complex. I think maybe the concern on some of the smaller infill stuff is, is maybe where that's a little bit more of a challenge. You and I met, I think, a couple of years ago and just said, is there a way that we could eliminate how many hands touch an application, just so there's a little bit more familiarity and, you know, it's not a different inspector? And I think you made that change.
Yep.
I haven't pulled a permit since or needed one, so I haven't experienced it personally, but I know we addressed that a couple of years back, so. I'm seeing in this other proposal, he's suggesting 65% of gross. There is a $59 per inspection fee in addition, so he's at a little bit different percent, well, 20% different percentage. But it, and obviously, that's a factor, but I think the biggest issue is on the smaller projects, being able to turn that around faster, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On that number four, where you mentioned the $59.
Yes.
Being careful on that. It says all work on sites where building permits have been issued prior to this contract, so.
Oh, okay.
In other words, if what?
If there's a carryover.
Exactly. Yeah, so it's not, so, whatever.
And we do have a commercial project that we just approved. Do you know, has that permit been pulled?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
My understanding is Mr. Stenzlin's only a limited billing official, and I don't know how he works out his commercial projects, but he, he's not authorized by the state to do commercial work.
Okay.
With a limited billing official license.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that billing permit has been submitted. It's probably been a couple of months.
Okay, so it's 100.
It's been applied for.
Okay. So, you're reviewing it now?
We must be waiting for information, would be my guess.
Okay. Well, what's council's pleasure? We could ask for a 30-day extension and have additional discussion or possibly even a workshop to discuss it? I mean, it's, I think it's a pretty significant decision.
We're talking about the budget on there.
Yeah, I think I've probably caught Scott a little flat-footed and apologized for that. I mean, at the end of the day, we're probably a pretty small customer in the grand scheme of things, but, you know, we make every decision thoughtfully and carefully.
What do you think about a workshop or something to kind of hold this off a little bit?
At the very least, I'll say this contract's got to, you know, I mean, let's just say that we went with this alternative plan. It's got to say Lakeland Shores everywhere, you know? So, there's a fair amount of editing that would need to be, Lakeland Shores, here and after referred to as Lakeland, just does not work for me, so. Would you be willing to give us a 30-day extension? And we could schedule a workshop and, and you could come and, you know, participate in that, and we can make sure we're doing a apples-to-apples comparison rather than winging it?
Sure.
You know, it'd also be nice to see Mr. Stenzlin.
Would he be invited? I was just going to talk about that.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, yes.
So, when's our next meeting, if we have one?
Well, I think that would be a reason to have a meeting in January.
And if I'm not mistaken, don't we have to have a meeting in January to appoint the new committees or re-up and things, or is that not by mandate?
It's not by mandate. Mayor, councilmembers, it's your next meeting. It would be your first meeting in the new year, so.
But we could be timely and go ahead and handle that.
Whatever. I don't know if there's going right or wrong. If we don't do that, then we would need to let Minspect know that, could we get a 60-day extension if we don't need an?
Let's deal with it in January and hope that we have some better weather in February and.
You will be having a February meeting for the comprehensive plan, so.
Yuck. Yuck.
So, you're.
Will there be a workshop in February, too, before the, no, don't need that, okay?
I don't think so.
Your January meeting would be Thursday, January 3rd.
January 3rd?
Your other option would be to have a.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Your other option would be to have a work session prior to your January meeting.
That's what I'm thinking we would do, is we'd have a workshop prior to our January meeting.
I meant in December, but.
Oh, I don't want a workshop in December.
What do you mean in December? Oh, to just have a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then we wouldn't be able to take any action.
Correct.
Right? So, let's do it January 3rd, let's say, 6 o'clock, a half hour. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Should be able to get it done in a half, don't you think? If we're all prepared and make everybody, and make sure that everybody's here on time and that.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah. So, your proposal, you were, you're willing to change it so that, at least on the smaller ones?
On residential projects, yeah, we would be, our outside limit would be 25, I'm sorry, five days with a, and actually, in some of the cities, we'd put in a penalty clause that we would pay a $25 per day penalty for not complying, to put our money where our mouth is with regards to that, so.
Okay. And just for my own information, do you ever, in your travels, when you're, let's say, going to Mr. Scanlon's place, you know, to inspect his, and you see dumpsters out in front of a place, do you ever knock on their door and ask whether, what's going on, or just curious?
We do, yeah. There is some of that that takes place. We try not to, we try to be discerning about that. If someone's emptying out, you know, their basement with junk and stuff, we, you know, if we don't see building materials sticking out or don't have a reason to think that something's going on, usually there's kind of evidence of work or not, and if something's sticking out, we can get a sense for what's there. If it's a tub, that's one thing. If it's a mattress, that's another thing in terms of how we look at those, but we do stop by, absolutely.
But, we are also complaint-driven, so, I mean, if you're making those observations, you know, let Kim know and she'll forward the message, you know, unfortunately.
Yeah, if you're aware of something, we'd be certainly happy to be responsive to anything we hear.
Believe me, I'm not the person to be go around checking on people's permits. Are you dumpster diving?
But, you know.
I was just curious.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, candidly, fundamentally, the reason we're doing permits, it's not to generate fees or to create busy work, it's to make sure that the project is done safely and effectively. So, I mean, it's in everybody's interest. Now, if a guy takes a couple of boards off his deck and replaces them, he doesn't need a permit. So, on those things where it's not as obvious if you need a permit, I don't know that anybody gets overly concerned with that, but, but there's definitely a time and a place and a, and a reason for permits, so there's, there's differentiation. I mean, a window permit, to replace windows, that's $65 or something and.
That's flat fee and.
Covers every window in your house, whether it's one or.
Yeah, you do 100 or you do 30.
Right. That's nothing structural, that's, Kim?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, legally per state law, the cities cannot make money off of building permits.
Right.
You, you can make to cover your administrative costs and to handle those sort of, sort of things, but yeah, it's not for revenue.
Tell that to the city of Plymouth, but yes.
I was just going to say, a few years back, I had an over $1,000 building permit to replace windows.
And a valuation-based community?
Yeah.
Well, and we don't necessarily need to go down that road, but you can have it in an enterprise fund and you can allocate certain costs, you know, of administration and facilities, and so there's ways to manipulate it, but I understand what you're saying. It'd be hard for us to allocate any cost towards facilities, since we don't have any facilities, but, so. Okay. All right, well, if you're willing to do a 30-day extension, I think we can memorialize that through this meeting.
Okay.
And if there's any background information that you would like or anything you'd like to communicate between now and January, feel free to contact any one of us or Kim. I did provide you a copy of that other proposal so that you have that and you can compare it. And if you want to make any suggestions or amendments based on the conversation, feel free to submit that as well.
Sure will.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll take no action on either of those items. We've got item D, consideration of canvas of election meeting minutes. I'm looking to you, Kim.
I'm sorry.
Consideration of canvas of election meeting minutes. Consideration of canvas of election meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor and council members, as you know, after the election, you need to formally accept the election results, which we did. And I just need a motion from those that were there in a second, and you are done with the election results.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Tim was there. Call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, was opposed, carries. We've got a tentative meeting schedule in our packet here for 2019. With any luck, we'll have a light year. And we always have the option of canceling, but we do need to establish the tentative schedule. So I'll make a motion that we adopt that meeting schedule. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Guess I always look for Christmas, Thanksgiving and Fourth of July, and all those seem pretty clear this year, so. Call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I will note that it does say on the back that the all meeting dates and times are subject to change. I will post this on the city's website. And there were no holidays, problems, issues. I did note for July that it's a week later. And depending on the Minnesota Vikings and Thursday night NFL football schedule, there may be a change.
What about going to be a patch?
No, no, there will be no change to that.
You know, going
You've got to have priorities, so yes.
Going back, an agenda item, I'd just like to call your attention. That meeting was called to order at four o'clock and it was adjourned at four oh one, so we were extremely efficient.
You got the pledge of allegiance in too?
Yeah. Let's move on to staff reports. City engineer, John, I think you're going to take that one? Do you want to do that now or do you want to do it in your report?
No, I can do it now. I talked to Tom Perotti today. He was thinking he might like to come to the meeting. I thought as a end-of-the-year budget saver, that'd save us paying him to show up here for it, and he seemed to be fine with that. He checked the Mayor Zeller, and he did say that, and the reason I checked with him was to basically discuss the Fourth Street South and where he was at as far as getting it out for bid between, somewhere between Afton Lakeland School and Quinlan. And, and he indicated that it was on schedule and that he's, as usual, trying to coordinate it with other communities that, when it goes out to bid, so that the people that bid on it would necessarily think that maybe they could do several jobs in the community or nearby. And he also talked to me about that part we did on Quinlan, Quinell last year, and indicated that there's a new process out there that's called rejuvenation, believe it or not. He says that has nothing to do with the fact that it's that, you know, here's a brand-new piece of asphalt that needs to be rejuvenated. It happens to be the name of the product or the trademark name. And what it is basically is them, I guess, sealing it in some way. He says it's important to be, have it done, and what he's asking of the city council tonight is to pass a motion allowing him to proceed with both rejuvenation project on the our most recent asphalt project, as well as getting bids on the job that's between County Road Eighteen and Quinlan on Fourth Street South. So with that in mind, I would make a motion for those two things for the, for the city council to pass tonight so that he can have the proper paperwork in order to proceed.
So the motion is to authorize John to go out for proposal on those two projects?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion?
I just had one question on that. So the rejuvenation, they do that a year after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Within two weeks, that's for sure.
Okay. So he couldn't wait to do the two together. He'd rather have that one done and then the Fourth Street would have to be rejuvenated the next year. That's what I was just thinking.
I can't believe, I'm not sure what it actually, I mean, is it somebody out there with a roller that, like, as we do our driveways, or do they, I'm sure it's more complex than that, but
I don't know. That's all I have.
Can you repeat the motion for me, please? Authorize bids on Fourth Street and?
Fourth Street South between County Road Eighteen and Quinlan. And the rejuvenation of our latest project that was done approximately a year and a half ago on, is it Quinell?
Yes. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call for a vote, all those in favor, signified by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for, from the engineer?
No, he did, he did tell me that he likes to show up once in a while for our meetings, and I just didn't think that for that particular bit of information that we need to pay him to do it this time, and maybe we should extend an invitation for him in January. He was concerned that we might not have a meeting, but now that we're going to have one, perhaps.
I think it'd be appropriate to have him here after those proposals are out and back and for our consideration, and we could talk about them with him. Maybe that's the best time?
Yeah, he didn't expect those to be going out until
February, I think.
February.
Yeah, so it may, it may be that we don't see him until March, but.
Any reason to have him come for the workshop so he can hear what's going on with the inspection services? Would he have any value that he could add to that for us?
Well, I mean, I'm sure he would have a comment and maybe some add value, but I don't know that it's really within his purview, so.
Okay.
I don't think we need him here.
How about our other issue with Mr. Scanlon?
Well, let's share the information that he provided to us, because he provided the bill and he provided a response. If you, if he'd like more than that, we certainly can invite him. It's not that he's not welcome, it's
And I'm sure he has documented on his invoice what
He does.
what all the work was for, so
Yep.
that we can review that.
And Kim, I forwarded that to you again so you wouldn't have to go hunting for it. Okay, real good. City clerk's report?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I will just add to that, it's protocol and typical with cities, if, with consultants, if they don't have agenda items, there is a huge cost savings. Do not come to meetings. Again, not that they're not welcome.
Right.
It adds up real quick. If they typically have a flat fee, which is higher, I know in another city, it's usually three to four hundred dollars to attend meetings, so.
Well, and honestly, I would, if I were him, I would rather stay home in the evening than attend another council meeting, but there's definitely times when we need them, and once or twice a year, it is good to see them, so, yeah. By the way, S E H was the one that provided us a box of chocolates this evening. As a Christmas present.
And where are they?
They're right here, that we will certainly share.
Oh, jeez, we got to wait till the end of the meeting?
And the poinsettia was shared by Minspect and the Mints.
And the Mints.
And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you.
Get that chocolate off.
We're going to move on to council member reports, and I see I'm listed first, so I want to give an update on some information I was able to gather. You may recall that back in September, we had asked John to reach out and see if he couldn't find out or get three answers that we had about our concerns relative to the water department. Those questions specifically were, how often is the system inspected by a third party? How often are samples taken by a third party? And when was the most recent hydrant flushing completed? What he ended up doing was communicating directly with Mr. Stanton, Public Works Director for Lakeland and a council member, and asked those three questions. We received a response prior to our November meeting indicating that Mr. Stanton would like to attend our meeting this month in December to address these three questions. You may recall, we had significant discussion and thought that a workshop would maybe be a little bit more productive and a little bit more user-friendly. Tom, I believe, had a conversation with Jim about the idea of getting something scheduled. We received a communication from him in the last couple of days indicating he wasn't available to attend our meeting this evening. He'd come in January. I reached out to the clerk of Lakeland indicating that I thought there had been discussion that we wanted to schedule a workshop. And her response was that she didn't know anything about it and hadn't been authorized to set anything up. So candidly, out of frustration, I did my own research. There is some information available on the Lakeland website about some of their state-required plans that they do every two years for the department. We can certainly, any one of us can access those. There's information about some testing that was done in, in consideration of the plume that we're aware of and concerned about. So then what I did was I researched and found a contact at People Service Incorporated, which is the company that is the licensed operator of record for the city of Lakeland. So ultimately, they are the ones that if there's a problem, it's their license that's an issue. So I reached out to them via email, and within an hour, I received a call from Paul Christiansen. I'll say that Mr. Christiansen couldn't have been nicer, couldn't have been more accommodating, and just was an open book, so. After that conversation, I can't tell you how much more comfortable I was with, with what's happening, the changes that are being made down there. He indicated that they have a licensed operator on-site two days a week. That they can electronically monitor that system and are monitoring that system seven days a week. And that there's daily samples that are being taken by local staff that's then processed by Peoples as, as the contractor, if you will. They're primarily testing for two things. And of course, I was driving, so I wasn't able to write either one of them down. But then I asked about, well, what about bacteria? How often are you testing for that? Because some articles we've read have indicated that bacteria's been an issue. He said that that's something that the state tests for, and he couldn't recall if that was two or three times per month. He was very complimentary of, of the staff at the water department, indicating that, you know, they're working hard, their hearts are in the right place, they're, they're on the right path, that they've made significant improvements to the system as a whole. He offered a tour, if we wanted one, and I just told him, myself personally, you know, we've received a tour in the past. All I see are a bunch of pipes and a bunch of valves and a big, large tank. I'm not one to figure out how that all works, but the invitation's out there, so. The conclusion to it all was, I thanked him for his time, I thanked him for his quick response. And then I did suggest that, you know, however this train got off the tracks relative to communication, that I'd appreciate any help he may be able to provide to get us all on the same page again, because there's a, there's a communication issue. So I'm thrilled to know that, that I think we can have confidence that there's no issue with the infrastructure, there's no no issue with the day-to-day operations. He's given me his name, his email, we'll make sure we have that on record if we have any questions or concerns. But I think simple things like an annual update would be beneficial. You know, maybe, maybe just being copied on where they are budget-wise. Because I understand, based on their last council meeting in Lakeland, that they're about a hundred thousand dollars over budget this year. That's due to additional improvements that they're making. That's not to say, it's misleading when they say that. Those are capital expenditures that cause them to be a hundred thousand over budget, so, if that helps. But then, you know, other things like flushing. When they're flushing, it'd be nice to know that that's taking place, because periodically, we experience it ourselves, or we get a phone call. And if we knew that was what was happening, it'd be a lot easier to respond and to, to squash any concern, so. It's my recommendation that we continue to, to make a formal request, that we just have an informal workshop on an annual basis. Maybe they consider some other ways to, to deal with communication internally, but I'd, I'd like to repair that relationship and see if we can't get better communication.
What was this guy's name from Peoples?
Paul Christiansen.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. If we can, you know, dialogue with Lakeland, it's to everyone's best interest.
I, I mean, frankly, that's been the challenge.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I'm not sure why, but that's been my challenge.
And I think what you noted in the joint powers agreement, which I read and wrote down, but I can't read my own writing, the stuff that you underlined there, the yellow, it seems to me that we're certainly entitled to that at a minimum, and you know, why why we can't, you know, approach somebody and set something up on a more regularly-scheduled basis that would allow us to look forward to getting the report, you know, whenever's the most appropriate time. I think, you know, it would ease everybody's conscience just a little bit, and, you know, we could figure out, you know, or have a better feel for what's going on there. And we obviously do, since you've talked to Mr. Christiansen, and you feel like he's somebody that, you know, can be depended upon to make sure that things are going right, but I think we, we just need the basics. We're not asking for
Well, I can tell you, John, I mean, hindsight being 2020, having been the mayor of Lakeland, you know, for six years, I learned more in a five-minute conversation with Mr. Christiansen than I did the entire time that, you know, I technically was one of five members responsible for overseeing that, so. I know that their council, you know, is probably equally, would equally benefit from the information. I think it's just good communication that we'd all benefit from. So, I'll, I'll continue to, well, I'll make a formal request, is what I'd indicated I'd do, because so far, I haven't made any progress. Tom, do you have any thoughts?
Can Mr. Christiansen have any, not necessarily influence or peddle his knowledge and to help him, help us facilitate to get Lakeland to be willing to do that?
Well, I, I think a simple ask at the council level, they'll accommodate us. They did last year. And it started off, we held it here. Lake St. Croix Beach was kind enough to host the meeting. And we held it here. It started off with a little bit of tension, but by the end of the meeting, I felt like it had been a very productive meeting and a good exchange of information, and I, I didn't think anyone left with any hard feelings.
No, I would have read the meeting exactly the way you did, which was it started off a little bit on the tense side, but, you know. You have to work with the people you have to work with, and that tends to be what happens, you know, so.
Yeah, but I can tell you, I also came prepared for that meeting. I I had to add, I had as much information as they had, so, maybe more. Tom, do you have anything to add to that or any thoughts? Do you think we're on the right path?
I guess the, I guess, when I sit here and I've thought about this, because, well, I've been kind of drawn into it a bit and
Well, you volunteered.
Yeah. No, I didn't.
Check the boots.
Yeah, everybody else took one step back. I, I often thought I was going to approach Jim with this, and I said, you know, is this a quarterly or an annual or semi-annual thing that we can just, you know, pick out X number of days and say, okay, it's the, you know, it's the second Tuesday of the, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and, and just kind of run that way with it, was what I was going to talk to Jim about, because I'm not exactly sure. Like you said, I'm not exactly sure what the volume of information is, you know, that we're going to need to exchange. And I don't want to have, I don't want to have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting and not having any information, go back and forth. I worked at 3M, I did plenty of those, I don't need any more, but so, I mean, and something that we can kind of establish a boilerplate agenda to also, you know, okay, here are our quarterly or semi-annual results. That's the only thing I would think would be an advantage, because everybody would know what they were coming for at that point.
Like if we timed it around, you know, maybe an inspection report that the state does?
Right.
You know, as well as maybe, you know
Oh, I, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's an annual Oh, I, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's an annual drop that has to be done. I don't know when it is, but I'm sure. And I will, I think Brian said he'd make a formal request, and I'll kind of plant a seed with Jim and say, this is kind of what we're looking for, you know, and however that works out best, you know?
Well, the other thing, and I've said this before, it would benefit, in my opinion, for them to have an advisory council. And the joint powers agreement does allow for that. It's advisory only, and it's advisory to Lakeland. And then maybe that's a two or three-person group that whether they meet quarterly or by, you know, twice a year or what have you, but I think you cannot educate people enough on that particular service. And I think there'd be benefit to that, but I'm sure there's going to be resistance to that.
I did talk to Jim about that, and you're right, there is a level of resistance there. And I didn't, I decided not to open that book. I just let him tell, okay, fine, you have your reasons. He said something about opening up a can of worms, and I...
Well, they're aware of that contract agreement, aren't they?
Of the joint powers agreement? Yeah. It's, I mean hindsight being 2020, John's a, you know, the lawyer in the group, it's not the best document that I've ever read. But it should be a joint powers agreement. And it's an important service.
Definitely. It's something that has to be held accountable for.
And let us not forget, gentlemen and ladies of the council, that it's a joint powers agreement. So doesn't Lake St. Croix Beach have a dog in the show here? And don't they want to be involved too?
I think there's the two cities that are on it. No, it's three, and then there's two homes in St. Mary's Point that are on it. I have had conversation with Lake St. Croix Beach, and they would, they'd like to be invited to a workshop if we...
So you've got two of the three that want to do something.
Right. And, you know, I loved the way he concluded our conversation, because I said, thank you for your time. He said, you're a customer. You call anytime you want.
I was going to say, yeah.
And I thought that was, I thought that pretty well summed it up, for me. So other than that, Debi O'Moore is, continues to do its good work, that's all I have. Councilmember Kapeski.
I have no special report, Mayor, but just a, I don't know if you want to make it a comment or a question, going back to one of the agenda items for the min-spec contract and the optional contract. May I make us something, I know that during the meeting that we said that we were going to provide min-spec with the optional contract? Would the reverse of that be also true, that the optional person stens in, will get a copy of min specs?
He'll get a, he'll get a invitation, and if you'd like a copy, he can certainly have a copy. It is a matter of public record, it is in our packet, it is online. But, yep, that's reasonable.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroder.
Oh, yeah. I have one thing. It's concerned me as you drive up and down County Road 18, you notice the people digging holes along the right-of-way and driving heavy equipment on our newly paved bike path.
I took pictures and video of it and sent it to Wayne Sandberg and County Commissioner Crisell, so they're, they are addressing that.
Because I know, as, well, you see that equipment sitting up, probably set at your office, that tandem truck with the water and the backhoe sitting on it, so I want to make sure that, I mean, I know it's damaging it, the longevity and, and I purposely one day stopped and the guys driving their pickups on it marking just before it, I said, you do know that you're not supposed to drive on here. And I told them who I was politely, and I said, you know, we have signs posted here. Well, where are we supposed to park? And I pointed, I said, there's a driveway right there, they're right at the roundabout on Division, and they could have parked right there. I said, this isn't for you guys. So that's the biggest thing.
Well, Mr. Sandberg responded to my email thanking me for it and indicated they would be on top of it.
Yeah, so, because it was, that wasn't cheap, I can't remember...
I was just going to ask that. We both have the same question, we're going to kind of wait. What are they doing?
Fiber optic line for a new cellphone tower.
New cellphone tower?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the tower going?
At the ice arena.
So allegedly, we'll have better fiber optic? Well, that won't be cellphone then.
It is cellphone.
Oh, it is cellphone.
Yeah.
So we might even have decent reception down here.
Yeah, but...
People's Service or whatever, if they...
I usually use my landline here.
And we don't have one.
Oh.
So that was my only thing. Or, you know, because it was done, what, two summers ago, and what was it, six to eight hundred grand?
I don't know that it was that much, but it was a lot of money.
Four to five hundred?
Yeah.
You know, that's taxpayers' dollars.
I think we got it handled.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Councilmember Fisher?
Not much is new. You know, obviously, the streets are a skating rink, and I had one complaint two days ago and about the intersection of Division and the roundabout there. And I called Ben of Tri-County and talked with him. Just for your information, Mr. Mayor, I called twice, and both times, you know, within an hour of each other, and the mailbox was full. But he called me back about 15 minutes after the, after the one, so either he was eating dinner, or he knew I was calling, even though I wasn't able to leave a message. So he did call me back and said that he'd get out, you know, I told him about the complaint. I also told him about the fact that this new young man that they had hired to plow was, you know, thinking the roads were about twice as wide as they actually are, and was, you know, not just a foot and a half over into somebody's yard, but closer to three feet.
He had half the plow on the yard.
And, you know, and I know Ben is concerned about that, because when Councilman Schroder mentioned last year about the fact that maybe I ought to get on Tri-County about doing something to the roads, I didn't think they were too bad last year. I mean, the grass next to it this year, you know, I can't imagine that they're not going to be bad, okay? I mean, he's way, way, and he, he's, Ben asked me, did you give him hell? And I said, no, he's just a kid, he's your hire. You know, I'm not going to yell at him for it. I said, you know, try to stay with, you know, use your head. On one side, you've got the mailboxes, and, you know, the other side, you...
Well, he was real good on the mailbox side.
So, anyway...
Yeah, but we were set up for turn lanes in the middle of the road.
These nuisance snowfalls is what I call them, where you get two inches or less, are always tough. They didn't get out there very quickly for us, and therefore, it's become...
Packed down, and it's ice.
He did say he'd get back out, and I didn't see much sand. It seems like some of the intersections are a little better than they were, so he might have dropped some salt there. That was the next day after I called him. So that's the status of the roads right at the moment, other than our dead-end sign was run over at the corner of Lakeland Shores Road and Gwinell. I did look at, as part of the city council thing, on the roads, if nobody's got any questions about them, the invoice that we got for the maintenance expenses that we share with Lakeland, which came to, last year, for the nine areas in the median, came to about $5,200 total, and our share of it was 33%, or 1,758.98. And I did the next day go speak to Jim Stanton about my, our concerns, and at least my concerns. And he was his usual friendly self, and so I didn't, you know, he made it clear to me that, and I preface all my remarks with, they looked fantastic this year.
Oh, they do, yeah.
You know, and, but I was concerned about the fact that the year before, the bill was like four or $500. This year, it was 1,700, and we didn't, weren't kind of expecting that amount. And he said, well, that was because the year before, they'd been run down, that type of stuff. And whenever I have a conversation with Jim, it's always about how much money he's saving me, okay? Or the taxpayers, okay? I mean, it's hard to have a conversation with him, because that is the focus. And it's said to me in a way that I find somewhat, somewhat turned off by it. And so I struggle to be congenial in my usual affable self. It's difficult. And, but I managed to pull it off, and we had a good conversation concerning it, and he told me about how much they'd done, and how much his wife had done with the weeding and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, how much money he'd saved by taking the, his trailer and going over to Menards and picking it up by the pallet, which, when I went over there to check, the price was $209 a pallet, which is about 70 bags. He used over 500 bags for the nine areas. And the more I got to be thinking about it, the more I thought, well, you know, even if the bill is, let's say averages every two years, $1,000 a year, you know, is this something that we, as a town, want to take on? I know when Carrie was a city council member, Carrie Schroder, she kind of looked into getting it done. We hired, I guess, a nursery to do it, or something like that. And so I just throw it out for discussion before we get into next spring as to whether we wish to continue our association with Lakeland on doing this, whether we want to take it on ourselves on a volunteer basis, which I'd be more than willing to try to set up. My expert advice would come from the people from Black's Nursery, who I know very well, who are more than willing to share their expertise as to, you know, how to best take care of these plants. And I think we have several alternatives if we want, including remaining just as we are.
So let me comment. Way back, my previous life, I made a similar comment about the expense of maintaining that area, and we had a garden club. And I said, why don't we let the garden club help us with this? And the answer that I received was, you can't allow just anybody to be working in the medians. There's a specific protocol that they have to go through, and it was, it just blossomed into this thing about the signage and the orange vests and the, so I'm just sharing that with you. I don't know if that was accurate or not accurate, that was two employees ago, so I don't know if that was an effort to silence me. It worked. So that's my first comment. The second comment is, there's nine of those beds, and I feel like personally, I like them, I think they, they look nice, but I think six would look just as nice as nine. And, you know...
I know where you're going.
If we were to, not necessarily eliminate them in Lakeland Shores, but, you know, if you looked at eliminating a couple of them, clearly, you'd save some money.
I mean, I do have issue with a couple of them when you pull out somewhere and to see with the grass that is kind of an obstruction.
Right.
But, yeah, that is a good idea.
Because there was even talk of just turning the whole thing into concrete a while back. I think the grass looks nice. I had mentioned that to Jim a while ago, and, you know, after I complimented him on the work, and he said, well, no, we got a handle on it now, and it's going to be, you know, so cheap that, you know, we don't need to worry about it. Well, that didn't, that's not the case. We do need to worry about it. So that was all part of the design review committee work when County Road 18 was redone, and they lowered the elevation, and the county was part of, well, the county spearheaded the entire project and paid for the majority of it, so if we were to make any changes, we probably have to go back and talk to either Cory Schlegel or Wayne Sandberg and say, you know, what are our options? Because this, this is costing quite a bit of money.
And they didn't do anything with the round, in the roundabouts?
The county's responsible for the roundabouts.
Yeah, and, you know, so you see how those get spruced up, and then the mulch wasn't, you know?
Yeah, they went away from mulch pretty fast.
Yeah.
And went to a low grow or a low mow. And even changed some trees that don't require water, because we lost a lot of trees in the roundabouts. So...
Yeah, some of them actually died, the other ones got run over.
Right, you know, right.
Well, that season's coming up.
So John, do you have either of their contact information? Wayne, Wayne or Cory? Okay, I'll give you Wayne's email address.
Yep.
So maybe it's another one of those things you have to do a little bit more homework.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind looking into it. I was just, you know, I just think it can be done more cheaply, and, you know, I'm not sure why it, if they, if the same people did it the last two years, why was this year, I mean, Jim made it sound like this year, they were in such bad shape that took this extra work, but that's not going to happen in the future. But I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out who did it the year before.
They did it the year before.
Well, did they plant, plant some plants this year?
There's nothing in their bill saying they did.
There was a lot of mulch.
Yeah, I know it was a lot of mulch.
So I think they're doing a heavy mulch every two years.
And then they preened it, I think, a couple times.
Right.
So, yeah, they did look nice, and I did let them know.
Yeah. Maybe we shouldn't have said anything, because the bill was quite a bit more.
Probably charged us for the phone call.
Yeah. Okay. Is that all, John?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you for digging into that, and I guess I volunteered you to dig into it just a little bit more.
But, you know, it took them 86 hours to do it, all of it. And so, let's just say 90 for the easy math, so we're talking about 30 hours, okay, if we had three of them. Approximately, obviously, 10 hours apiece. And it just seems to me that, you know, you know, those of us retired that have all this time on our hands, you know...
Well, you've got pothole patch, too, so you can give it all up.
Yeah, right. You don't have that much time.
I'm retired, I don't have any time on my hands.
So, anyway, it just seems to me that it ought to be a cost that shouldn't be more than $700 a year.
Well, I like your thinking, so let's keep working on it. Okay, Tom, round us out?
Couple things, just real quick ones. I believe next week, we're going to approve a new duty vehicle, and that will give us two. One for the duty officer and one for the chief. Currently, we're running, we're running one, and the chief is right, driving a grass rig, which is a terrible use of that piece of equipment. Like I mentioned before, it's not going to have any impact on our budgeting of the equipment, because we've moved some things around. And speaking of budget, we just approved ours, and I get to start another one in 30 days for the fucking department, so...
And actually, we're not, what it is, is we're not turning the other one out, they're keeping the old one.
Right, they're keeping the old one.
Which is cost-effective.
Yeah, so, we're going to have, you're going to see two pothole kind of vehicles running around now, but that...
Because then equipment ain't exposed and freezing in the, the grass fire.
Yeah. When they were using the, the chief's, the grass rig in the winter, they would have to drop the water, because if they're running it around, they can't have the 400-gallon tank of water full in below freezing weather.
Another equipment.
Kind of hard on them. So, anyway, that's, that's the only really big things that are going on. I can't think... You got anything else on the floor?
Okay. Anything else to report?
No.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
A second?
I figured you'd be all over.
Oh, a second. All those in favor?
Like this.
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Don.